All right, we're ready to get started. This is another one in the series of our bad weather city council meetings. Thank you for joining us tonight. So we'll begin by rising for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few proclamations to begin with tonight, and the first proclamation, I forgot to tell you, one second, to mute your cellphone if you haven't already. Oh, I can see several of you double checking. Okay, good, I'm glad I mentioned that. We have several proclamations tonight, and the first is a recognition of, I think this is the right way to say it, race car driver, right? Race car driver.
NASCAR inductee, Hall of Fame.
Okay, yes, there you go. Jack Ingram, who was gracious enough to be with us tonight. And before we come down to present the proclamation, we have a short video to watch.
We're here with Jack and Aileen Ingram, getting ready to go into the NASCAR Sports Hall of Fame. And for both of you, first for you, Jack, what does that mean to you when you've got the news that you're going to go into the Hall of Fame?
Well, I don't know how you'd finish off a racing career in any better fashion than being selected in NASCAR Hall of Fame. That is a great honor, in my opinion, as far as racing is concerned, probably one of the biggest honors in racing.
Aileen, how about you?
I feel the same way he does. I think he's accomplished something that a lot of people probably will never accomplish in his career, especially doing it on his own, more or less. I mean, he did have sponsorship throughout his racing career, but not ever like they do now. So, and he, you know, he was the sole owner and built his race cars from scratch, I mean, you know. I think he accomplished a lot, and I think he deserves to be there. I think if anybody does, he does.
Yeah. Last to agree, Jack, you're the kind of guy, like you, like Aileen said, you know, you built your cars, you raced them, you financed them a lot on your own. There's not many guys doing that anymore.
There didn't many guys do it then. Most of them come up in a racing family like Richard Petty and, hey, a few of them didn't, David Pearson, maybe Bobby Allison, two that I think made it big pretty much on their own, like I did. Although, they drove for other people, I didn't. I was the gentleman's own racing team the whole time.
All right, that's very nice. All right, you have got the proclamation.
Yeah, it's quite an honor just to be standing here with Jack Ingram, and very fortunate to have had him as a friend for a number of years. And his wife and my wife worked together. I guess that probably kept us in line more than anything else. But Jack was instrumental in the, in the building of the memorial down at Carrier Park, at the old racetrack that so many people enjoyed so much. And Jack helped us do that memorial down there. We found, there's pictures of Jack on there along with other drivers from this area, and we could not have done it without him. It's a lot of fun working and doing that, but Jack's been a great sports spokesman for the city of Asheville for many years. He's carried the Asheville banner a long way and a long time, and there's very few people done what Jack has accomplished over the years. So we wanted to recognize him for being inducted into the NASCAR Hall of Fame. It's a way of honoring one of our great citizens, and Jack's been a good citizen over the years. He's been one who's been active in the community and grew up in West Asheville, Bend Creek area, and ran a shop there for many years, he and his brother, and raced down on the river and then raced all over the country. He's probably more well-known in parts of the country than he is here, other parts of the country. And he's just a great guy, and I am very fortunate to count him as a friend. And it, I think it's significant that Jack is one of, one of 25 members of NASCAR Hall of Fame, and that, his car was, they asked him to rebuild a replica of his winning car that he won so many races with, his sportsman car, and put in the initial Hall of Fame. It's been down there ever since. And he just, Mayor Bellamy went down for that, and we just had a great time with his car going into that Hall of Fame. If you haven't been to the Hall of Fame, you need to go down and visit it. It's, it's something to have one of our own there and to be inducted into it. So the mayor has done a proclamation. I'll read that presently, and then the mayor will say a few words. Whereas it is fitting and proper to honor Asheville native Jack Ingram, who was inducted into the NASCAR Hall of Fame on January 29, 2014, and whereas Jack Ingram is one of only 25 people in the NASCAR Hall of Fame, and he is the first person inducted from Western North Carolina, and whereas Jack Ingram established himself as one of the all-time greatest short-track drivers, having been given the nickname Iron Man, and whereas Jack Ingram has earned the respect and admiration of fellow drivers, area residents, and friends, and his dedication to the best interests of the community has won the high regard of all his associates, and whereas Jack Ingram is the consummate supporter, promoter, mentor, and statesman of the sport of auto racing, and in particular for the sanctioning body of NASCAR, and whereas Ingram won three consecutive NASCAR championships from 1972 to 1974 in the late-model sportsman division, and Ingram won the inaugural NASCAR Bus Series championship in 1982, and again in 1985, and Ingram won over 300 NASCAR races in his career and 12-track championships. And whereas Ingram was named one of the NASCAR's 50 greatest drivers in 1998, and whereas Jack Ingram is a legend to many racing fans and a hero to many drivers because he financed his own cars, then he built them and raced them to perfection. Now therefore, Esther Mannheimer, mayor of the city of Asheville, does hereby proclaim Jack Ingram shall receive the ceremonial key to the city in recognition for his exemplary performance in auto racing, and he shall enjoy all the rights and responsibilities from possession of the key from this day forward. Signed by Esther Mannheimer.
Thank you, Jan, and the mayor, and the whole city council for having me up here. I'm a little bit hoarse, I've been doing a lot of phone interviews and going places and doing them, so you guys excuse my voice, but I'm glad to be here, I'm glad to be an Asheville citizen. I love it here, I raised my family here, and raced out of here, started racing at Old Ashville, New Asheville Speedway is no longer there. That's where I started, and if it pales me, go right into NASCAR Hall of Fame.
We'd like to present you with the key to the city, and in honor of you, and we're so thankful you could come down tonight so we could present you with the proclamation.
Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you.
Something you don't know about, probably as recently as a year or so ago, he was probably racing at Greenville Pickens Speedway on a Friday night or Saturday night.
Saturday night.
But Jack's, Jack's quite a character and quite a, quite a figure in the sport. He's on his way down to Daytona next week. He'll be down there promoting some charities and going to some events down there, and will be a very popular person. It's an honor to have you here with us this evening. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. I gotta go.
See you, Jack.
Good times.
And before we go on to the next item, I wanted to make sure that we thanked the Asheville Citizen Times for the use of the video about Mr. Ingram. Thank you. The next proclamation regards Red Hand Day, and I'm going to read that, and then you can introduce yourself and say a few words. Whereas child soldiers are fighting in at least 14 countries around the world, and boys and girls alike are forced into combat, exploited for their labor, and subjected to unspeakable violence, and whereas a United Nations treaty prohibits the participation of children under the age of 18 in hostilities, but too often it is not enforced, and many countries have not yet ratified it, and whereas a United Nations treaty known as the optional protocol to the Convention on the Rights of the Child on the Involvement of Children in Armed Conflict prohibits the use of children under age 18 in hostilities or their forced recruitment, and whereas on February 12, 2009, United Nations Secretary General Ban Ki Moon pledged that the United Nations would work to eliminate the use of child soldiers, and whereas Red Hand Day is February 12 because the treaty banning the use of child soldiers entered into force on February 12, 2002. And now therefore, I, Esther E. Mannheimer, mayor of the city of Asheville, do hereby proclaim February 12, 2014 as Red Hand Day in the city of Asheville, and commend its observance to all citizens.
My name's Heather Kinlan, and I'm here representing students at some middle schools at Inca, Irwin, Reynolds, and Owen Middle Schools, and unfortunately they couldn't be here due to the weather, so I'm here representing them, and I'm going to read something that they wrote in preparation for today. We are representing Venezuela, Indonesia, New Zealand, and Greece at the Middle School United Nations Conference in April. To prepare for conference, we are learning about the geography, history, culture, and current events of those countries. We are also learning about global issues, for example, human rights and the prevalence of child soldiers. The UN is a group of countries that work together to ensure global communication about world issues, and we're having a lot of fun learning about it. Thank you for accepting our Red Hand Day proclamation. Thank you very much.
Tomorrow, February 12, it would be the 205th birthday of Charles Darwin. I note that over the last 25 to 30 years, the number of people who do not believe in the theory of evolution in the United States has risen dramatically. The campaign to cast doubt on one of the core pieces of information in our science education curriculum has been all too successful, and America's standing among science students, high school students in the world, has fallen during that period of time. I think there's no, no question as to one of the reasons why that's happened. So this proclamation is making, is recognizing tomorrow as Darwin Day. Whereas February 12, 2014 is the anniversary of the birth of Charles Darwin in 1809, and whereas Charles Darwin is recognized for the development of the theory of evolution by the mechanism of natural selection, and whereas Darwin's theory of evolution by natural selection is recognized as the foundation of modern biology, an essential tool in understanding the natural world and the development of life on Earth, and whereas Darwin's theory of evolution by natural selection has provided and continues to provide the basis for great advances in science, medicine, and philosophy, and whereas the anniversary of Darwin's birthday is an appropriate period on which to reflect and celebrate the importance of scientific advancement to all people, and whereas government bodies around the world, including the United States Congress, have designated this anniversary as a celebration of the life and work of Charles Darwin, and whereas the anniversary of Darwin's birthday is an appropriate period on which to reflect and celebrate the importance of scientific advancement to all people. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Mannheimer, mayor of the city of Asheville, do hereby proclaim February 12, 2014 as Darwin Day in the city of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate the importance of Darwin's contributions to science. This is being presented to Jennifer Lovejoy, who's president of the Western North Carolina Humanist Association. There you go, Jennifer.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. Get my glasses on so I can read this. February 12, 1809 must have seemed like an ordinary day to those alive at the time, but now we know it to be the birthday of two giants in humanity, Abraham Lincoln and Charles Darwin. Abraham Lincoln liberated human beings from physical bondage. Charles Darwin liberated the human mind with a new scientific understanding of our origin and nature. Lincoln has received the respect that he deserves from our culture, and so should Darwin. Darwin's theory of evolution is the fundamental basis of all life science. Darwin Day is the celebration of the diversity and interconnectedness of all life. It is also recognition of the importance of science and reason in our lives. Celebrations are an important part of every culture. They provide tradition and a common bond to be shared among those who make up their culture, permitting them to experience a meaningful connection to one another and to the principles to which they subscribe. At this juncture in history, the world has become so small and interdependent that we need a global celebration to promote a common bond among all people. Darwin helped to show that all life on Earth is truly connected, and now the Darwin Day celebration connects us all through the international language of science. Science is our most reliable knowledge system. It has been and continues to be acquired through human curiosity and ingenuity. Darwin Day is our global celebration. It is the celebration of the rise of science over superstition. It is the celebration of the diversity of life. It is a celebration for all, and I am proud to live in an area that recognizes and celebrates Darwin Day. Thank you very much, and I hope you all have a wonderful Darwin Day.
Okay, that, that's what we have tonight for our proclamations. I think you'll agree, we had a varied subject matter in our proclamations tonight, and thanks to all who are here to participate in that. But lastly, before we move on to the consent agenda, we have employee recognitions, and I'll turn it over to city manager Gary Jackson.
Thank you very much. We have one recognition to do tonight due to an absence away from the community. One will postpone for two weeks. But tonight, we're going to spotlight our water director, Steve Schoeff. If I could call Steve up to the podium. Steve Schoeff was already well-established within the water director's management profession when we hired him, recognized as a national leader, a state leader in terms of his professional development, his skill, the talent that he brought to running the Burlington Water System, water and sewer system. So he's a consummate professional, has been very active in his national profession, national organization certifications of water districts, development of the field, which causes him to be well thought of and highly acclaimed within other water directors and sewer directors in the country. And what we're here to celebrate today is his selection for the southeast states of the country to be the vice president on the American Water Works Association, that board which leads professional development and other activities to ensure that our water systems or, and sewer systems are managed to the highest standards and produce the highest quality water and the greatest public safety and the management of, of our sewer districts as well. So I'm going to call on Steve, recognize him for being, taking this position, and allow him to talk to you about what the American Water Works does and how he's going to continue in that, in that area. Steve?
No pressure. Good evening. I appreciate you allowing me to be here, and I want to express my appreciation for the support of the council, support of the city management, as well as the staff of the city of Asheville. It's always important to be able to lean on that support when you need to and feel that there are people backing you up and have your back. So I want to talk a little bit about the American Water Works Association. It's an international association, and I was joking with Gordon earlier that international means Canada and Mexico as well as the United States. So it is North American in scope. Although we are starting an initiative in India, the water resource problems in India are overwhelming, and if, if you want to look at a place where there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, perhaps that's the place to go. The vision statement of the association is a better world through better water, and this is not just a logo on a letterhead, it's a true statement and testimony to the will and determination of this organization. The organization actually has kind of three legs of the stool, and one is professional development. Professional development is garnered by various publications, knowledge resource, in-person training, and online training for water professionals. The association tries to support as many different kinds of interests in the field, everything from accounting and personnel and management issues to microscopy and chemistry and, and other hard sciences, physics and so forth. So professional development is very important. The, the second leg of that stool is an advancement and innovation of the science and technology in the water field. It's very important to continue researching better ways to address the problems that are facing the water industry, and the AWWA certainly supports that. The third stool is a regulatory and policy advocacy leg of the stool, and the home office or the, the international office of AWWA is in Denver, Colorado, but the association also maintains an office in Washington, DC, and the staff of the Washington, DC office spend a lot of time with congressmen, senators advocating for water policy and water regulations that will protect people and public health and provide safe water. There are a number of core principles listed by the association, starting with the provision of safe water, the safeguarding and enhancement of the environment, protection of public health, the pursuit of excellence and integrity, and also the promotion of diversity and inclusion. So you can see that this, this is a large organization that, that takes a very thoughtful approach to the water industry, water professionals, and the situation of safe water in North America and certainly worldwide. It's, it's one of the premier organizations, the premier organization in North America, and I was very honored to be elected as a vice president of that organization. And once again, I truly appreciate the support that the city of Asheville has given me. Thank you.
And I think Chief Burnett is not with us here tonight, but do you want to announce his recent award? No, you don't want to announce it? All right. It was already in the paper, so it's not terrible, terribly secret, but, but we will honor Chief Burnett at a meeting where he's able to attend. All right, next we have our consent agenda, and please note that there's one addition to the consent agenda that is, is an item regarding the quiet zone, which is the, where the train goes through in the River District. That has now been a designated quiet zone. And then also on the consent agenda, there is a line item, which is a budget amendment to transfer 75,000 from fund balance for the purchase of additional sand and salt, and that amount has been increased to 150,000 in light of the forecasted storm. And I just want to say a couple of words about the city's preparedness regarding this storm that we may or may not see, just, just so the citizens know, the city holds 1,600 tons of salt and sand, and our trucks can distribute 25 to 60 tons of the mixture every day, and our fleet maintenance works around the clock as well when we're, when we're at code red like we are now. That's my term, I don't think we use a code red. We also have, for interested citizens, something called Snow Mapper, which is on our website, and you can look to see how the city's streets are prioritized for plowing. I know that is of great interest to some people, so check that out, Snow Mapper, on the city of Asheville's website. And we also want people to know that in terms of prioritizing street plowing, the city looks at, you know, where hospitals and businesses and schools are and prioritizes the streets accordingly. So that's just some information regarding the city's preparedness for any snowstorm, and in particular this one coming up. And with that, is there anyone else who'd like, has a comment or a question regarding any item on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda, including the addition of the extra item.
Second.
And the change to item F from 75,000 to 150,000.
And changing, yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment regarding any item on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to the public hearings, the first item that I think everyone is referring to in a shorthand way called the Avalon, the, the applicants are requesting that this item be continued until when, Maggie? When is the? February 25. Do I have a motion to continue that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments regarding that motion? All right, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we won't see the Avalon until February, whenever Maggie said 20-something, 25. Thank you. All right, the next item is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to add standards to allow the use of electrified security fences in zoning districts that allow industrial uses.
Yes, mayor and councilman. Glad to see you. This is a UDO amendment that was requested by the Public Safety Committee during some discussions last fall, and staff has done some additional research and come up with this proposal, which would allow businesses in the industrial-related districts to have these electrified fences. The proposed language came from a combination of a Model R ordinance suggested by the, the company that installs these, and a, a lot of additional research that we did in looking at other communities. So that's the breadth of the recommendations. The staff, we do have a couple of minor tweaks we would like to recommend at the request of legal staff. One is a little, in the addition to the definitions for the electrified security fences, in the next-to-last sentence, it would say government facilities and utility facilities in that sentence. And then where we reference the code, for the fire code, because it was specifically requested by the Planning Commission, that we reference the same requirements that any other alarms are required to follow, that that is in Chapter 13, Article 2, Section 1332 of the city code. This was discussed at the Planning Commission, and after a fairly brief discussion, they recommended approval for, to two of this change. We would be happy to answer any questions. Staff does recommend approval as it does meet the requirements as requested by the Public Safety Committee.
Any questions? No?
This got reviewed at Public Safety.
Oh, so you all have thoroughly vetted it at Public Safety?
Very thoroughly.
Very thoroughly vetted it, okay. All right, then do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To approve, I'm assuming?
Excuse me?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here wishing to make comment regarding the motion? No, and, and it will be, the motion will be to adopt it with the recommended amendments that you stated previously.
Correct.
Okay. We're clear on that. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, moving through. That closes the public hearings, or public hearing, that was the one. We have no unfinished business. On, on new business, we have item A, Maggie Ullman, just start making your way up here, resolution to establish a long-range residential waste reduction goal to guide municipal waste services.
Mayor, council, I assure you, even though my husband's been teasing me, I'm not going to be the first person to go into labor at a council meeting. We're going to make it through. Hope everyone's doing really well tonight. I'm going to go through a quick PowerPoint, share some things about the proposed resolution, and then be on hand to answer any questions as you look through that. So the purpose of the resolution is to consider a residential waste reduction policy. The proposed policy is for residents in the Asheville area to reduce the waste going to the landfill by 50% by the year 2035. And you can see that the recommendation is to stagger that out over that 20-year-or-so period. The goals of this are to, one, extend the life of the bunkum The goals of this are to, one, extend the life of the Buncombe County landfill, which is currently projected to reach capacity around 2035, which is the time period of the resolution. Another goal is to increase reuse, recycling, and composting. And then also to enhance the local economy by diversifying waste services. Right now, we have a lot of garbage haulers, but looking into the compost facilities and into compost haulers and the recycling haulers, things of that nature. So recycling and solid waste reduction has been a high priority of council since 2010. We've done numerous exciting things, most notably in 2012, we delivered Big Blue to our residents' front doors and have seen 6.4% reduction in waste going to the landfill from that initiative alone. You can see on the slide, there's been a handful of other initiatives, and this policy would ensure continued new initiatives and programming to support waste reduction. So I want to go through some information of the background that staff and the Sustainability Advisory Committee researched and worked through to get to the point where this proposal is coming to today. One of the local contexts is the landfill capacity. The Buncombe County landfill opened in 1996 with a 30-year lifespan. And nationally, we saw the recession significantly reduce the amount of waste going into the landfill, that it extended our projected lifespan another 10 years. Even though we're looking at 20 years out, that that landfill might be completely full, each year, the waste coming from Asheville residents accounts for anywhere from 16% to 22% of the total waste going to that landfill. So Asheville residents are a big contributor to filling up that landfill. And as a result, this type of policy would help us be engaged with our partner county to start extending that life. Planning to open a new landfill is a very, very extensive, significantly complex process. So you might say, 20 years from now, we have time. But the planning efforts, the citing efforts, the regulatory efforts to open a new landfill are very complex. I'll leave it at that. And so 20 years is not as long as you might think, which is part of why the CC Committee and staff and the county are starting to have conversations about this landfill capacity. Another local context is really understanding what's in the waste stream now. We knew that if we wanted to up the ante, if you will, on what we're doing with recycling or waste reduction, we need to know it was in the garbage. And so we worked with green opportunities to do a waste audit, and we partnered with the county to do this audit. And this fall, we had a statistically significant portion of our waste evaluated and found that what's going in the green containers now, 18% of it could actually still be recycled. And 26% could be composted in a commercial-grade compost facility. So that means 44% of what's going to the landfill right now could find another home in a reuse or recycle situation, which I think really confirmed that even though Asheville tops the charts as far as state recycling and state solid waste reduction, even Asheville still has a lot of potential to reduce what's going in the landfill. So that, I think, confirms that if we set a policy tonight for waste reduction, we still have room for growth to improve. Another local context is, how are we doing so far on waste reduction in the first place? The two things that I've circled up here show, in the last six years, the two big significant drops in garbage going to the landfill. The first was because of the recession, as I mentioned, global trends, we just saw less waste happening. And then the second was as a result of the Big Blue recycling can. So we're seeing a steady decline in materials going to the landfill, and we'd like to continue on that and increase that more dramatically. Oh, I went backwards. Let's go forwards. This slide shows you not just the waste reduction, which is that top orange line, but it shows you the red and blue lines. The red line is, how are we doing with recycling? This trend shows you that since Big Blue, the materials we're collecting recycling is going up, which is the good direction for recycling. We want waste to go down, recycling to go up. And so we're on the right track there. But as you know, what you measure, you measure what matters, and you need to have long-term goals sometimes to enable really good long-term performance. The blue on here is our yard waste, and I just want to make a note that the proposed policy does not include yard waste in the reduction goals. And the reason for that is that the yard waste is currently not going into the landfill. That is getting mulched by a private, a local private company, and is going back, kind of being recycled through the mulching process. So we're leaving that out of the policy at this point in the recommendation. This slide has a lot of words, but it's really just to say, staff and the CC Committee did a lot of research. We want to make sure that, who's on par with this? Who in the state is leading this effort? Who nationally is having this type of conversation? And Asheville is not on the bleeding edge here, but we are on the leading edge. Towns like Carboro here in North Carolina, and then nationally, Austin, Texas, and some other names, have set policies on waste reduction. They're all complex because they all provide different types of services, so there's kind of nuances. There's no one standard policy with one standard metrics. It's variable based on what government services are offered. So when we did that research, it told us, well, there's not one policy that every city's adopting that we can just take off the shelf, that we need to craft ours to meet our local context, and that is what is being presented to you. And what I want to show here is kind of a financial conversation, because I think it's very important, when you look at a triple bottom-line program, that you don't just think of the environmental benefits, but you think about the impact on the community and the impact on the economy. And if you're going to set a very courageous goal for waste reduction, there may be financial implications in the future. So the example here is to say that so far, we've been able to advance our recycling efforts through recycling money. So when we started Big Blue, we knew that buying all those carts, 30,000 carts for residents, was going to cost more money. It cost about $1.1 million. So we borrowed money to do this. We were able to start the program, and what we actually found is that the program reduced the amount of waste going to the landfill by $110,000, which was the exact amount we owed the bank every year for the next 10 years to pay off those carts. So we were able to bring to council a revenue-neutral or budget-neutral program to bring you Big Blue, so it wasn't asking for more resources. It was saying, we're just going to use the resources we already have budgeted a little bit differently. This example, we've seen with our LED streetlights, with a lot of our energy programming with this recycling program. And staff believes that, based on the waste audit and how much waste is currently recyclable or compostable, we have more potential to recycle money that is currently being paid just in tipping fees to the landfill to change some programming. So that there might be potential where, if new programs or services come up in the years to come to reach this policy goal, that we might be able to continue to use savings to pay for it. And then furthermore, just as with any big changes, if there are financial considerations or fee impacts over the future, those type of things will come to you each year in the budget process. Included in the resolution is a long-term plan. It's kind of a fancy piece with a lot of color, with some ideas of ways that we could get there. But we're not asking you to approve any new programs or services today. We're saying, they'll come to you in the budget cycle, and you'd consider them in the big-picture context of the entire city budget and operations. So I'll kind of part with, well, what are some of the basic ideas that staff has researched that if you pass this policy, we would continue researching and bring to you in time? One is a pay-as-you-throw model, where if my mother-in-law brings one bag a month, she would pay less than me and my husband, who are starting a family and have a lot more waste. We would pay more, she would pay less. The more you waste, the more you pay. That basic structure. We also are investigating and partnering with the county on looking into curbside compost collection, to see if maybe there's an opportunity for the county landfill to open up a composting operation. There's a lot of research yet to be done, a lot of details that could make or break that type of option, but we're starting to look into it. And then there's a lot more educational programming. We've never had anyone dedicated on staff to work on waste reduction education. There might be an opportunity to pinch some resources to get more programming out there, like the program we just, the mayor launched this morning, this Recycle and Win program, where every Asheville resident's going to get a mailer next week that has program details. But essentially, if you put this sticker on your recycling bin and you do a good job recycling, the Price Patrol could be driving around, and they'll give you a $50 gift card to Ingles. So a really great partnership with Coca-Cola and Ingles and the city to educate. They're going to be doing media ads on television and on the radio. We can continue doing more programs like that to educate the public on waste reduction. So those are three examples of programming we could continue or explore and expand over time that staff would be recommending if council feels that the community really wants to dig into a long-term goal for waste reduction. With that, I'll conclude and see if there's any questions or comments. I appreciate your time, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Maggie, I had a question.
All right.
Before you get too far.
Thank you.
I noticed in the comparisons to the other cities, that their targets were more ambitious than the one that we're laying out. I wonder if you could talk about that for a minute?
Essentially, and I want to go back to that slide. Part of what's really tricky, again, is that it's hard to do apples to oranges, because, for example, some cities are the commercial haulers, the residential haulers, the recycling haulers. Some cities don't provide any of those services, but structured incentives for the businesses who do. So I think part of it is more about what municipal services are offered. Another thing is, many of these cities own and operate the landfill. And so if you have been in Chapel Hill in the last five years, the conversation of waste reduction is very, very hot, because the city of Chapel Hill owns that landfill, and it is going to close very, very soon. So many of these communities had this policy conversation with five years left, as opposed to 20 years left. And so I think the guidance we were getting from the CC Committee was, if we could reduce half, which is still pretty aggressive in 20 years, that shows our commitment, that really ensures that Asheville's in a leadership role, where we're having conversations with our partners, because we can't do this alone, and that would set us on track.
That's great. And I know that you're not going to limit yourself to that number as you pursue this. And it's my hope that we'll be able to do, as we did with our carbon reduction goal, of being able to actually look at increasing that target over time. And I wish you nothing but the best.
Maggie, I can't read that second column. What does it say, 2011? The goal is in the, oop, the goal is in the 1 to, the fourth column.
It's probably a performance assessment of where they were as of 2011 on achieving their goals.
Oh.
It looks like many communities were well on their way.
And did you already explain how it works when they have multiple goals? Is that a staggered?
I think many of them are staggered. I didn't go into much depth on this one, just again, because the main thing that staff took away from researching and comparing ourselves to others was, is there a gold standard policy where you say 20% by year 2020?
Right.
And like with our carbon reduction goal, the policy we set was kind of the national standard as far as the metric. And with waste, there's no unified metric. That was really the highlight that we learned, and then we had to do the analysis on, well, then what's the metric that's going to be meaningful to us?
Have we had that conversation with the county? Have they been at the table and understand what we're doing? And are they thinking of enlarging the program to include the county?
I think that the conversation with the county so far has been very positive. We started this partnership around researching composting with them this past summer, and through that, we got this waste audit. And the second half of the partnership is to really evaluate, if the county's going to be opening a new cell of a landfill and issuing more debt to run that operation, do they have potential to also open up a compost facility under that same enterprise? And so that, to me, really indicates that we're looking together at solutions, but I can't reiterate enough, and I've communicated very clearly when talking with the county, that this can't be a we-win-and-they-lose type of situation. Because if we are so wildly successful, they're running an enterprise fund at the landfill, and that could put them out. We're county residents, too. And so if they go in debt on the landfill, that's a big problem. So that's why we went to them and said, here's a way that we could all win. We could still bring our waste across your scales if you had a compost facility, but instead of it going into the landfill, it could go into a composting stream. Can we research that together to see if that could be a financial win-win for you and a win-win for our goals and values on waste reduction? We're still early in that partnership research. But when we presented it that way, saying, we want to bring our waste across your scales, we just don't want it going in the landfill side, can we figure something out together? They said, yeah, let's do this step by step. So I think that bodes well for the initial conversation. We've shared this data with them and our long-term goals, and there's a lot more to figure out through that partnership. But I know the city's committed and the county's committed to keeping that dialogue moving.
Yeah, I have a question. When you did the analysis of the trash, there were three areas, right, organic, recyclable, and other. Was it more fine-grained than that? Is there data about what that 56% comprises?
Unfortunately, there isn't. Waste audits are more complex than one would think, and this was our ability to streamline the process and kind of be reasonable with taxpayer money.
I was just curious.
Yeah, what I will say about the waste audit that we did get, which I'm very excited about, is we were able to get the data based on routes. So we were able to see that Esther's route might have been performing better than Cecil's. Now, we aren't going to publish that. We don't want to make anyone feel bad. But it gives us the ability, when we're looking at education, instead of just sending a postcard to everyone, maybe we'll just send postcards to Cecil's neighborhood. Or, you know, maybe, you know, I'm just picking on you, Cecil, or Councilman. But, you know, maybe we will be able to do more targeted education and outreach, where it's a community event at this neighborhood's community center with education targeted there, which allows us to be a lot more nimble with outreach and education, which is new. That data gives us a lot of opportunity. Sorry, didn't mean to tease you.
Well, and so one of the things I learned today participating in this event at Ingles on Tunnel Road, where we were partnering with Coca-Cola and Ingles to incentivize recycling by having an opportunity to win a $50 gift card from Ingles, but you've got to take the sticker you're going to receive next week and stick it on the side of your recycling bin. When you get that mailer, you're going to get some information. They're helping us with education in terms of what you can recycle and how to recycle. So that's what the city gets from it. They get help with the education piece, which alleviates that burden for us and is an opportunity to enhance the program. But we're already performing, you know, I think they said the best percentages in the state. I'm not positive that's true. So I think that that's really exciting, that we're already doing so well, but that we have an opportunity to do even better. And I absolutely love the phrase "waste audit," because that's somebody picking through the trash.
Oh, yeah.
But my final comment, Maggie, is I attended this, when I went to the new mayor's school, they had a session on, how do you motivate citizens to participate effectively in programs like this? And the postcard concept, it's actually been researched by these social psychologists. They found it to be the most effective when you are able to send a postcard, say, to Cecil, and say, do you know that your neighbors are recycling, you know, 50% better than you are? It was essentially the guilt model, and they saw, and if you add like a frowny face or something to it, statistically, it actually improved the, whatever goal it was you were trying to incentivize them to achieve, oddly. However, conversely, if you send them a postcard and say, you're doing a much better job than your neighbors, happy face, they would drop off. So you can't tell anyone they're doing a great job.
All right, so no rewards.
It was real data, it was very interesting.
Well, the social science is evolving really quickly on this type of thing, and we know that there's a lot of new methods that we haven't had the flexibility to explore, and partnerships like what we're doing with Ingles and Coca-Cola enable us to really go for it as far as trying out new methods of outreach and education. So we look forward to more of those type of partnerships.
Well, there's a guy at Harvard who's already figured it all out, so just go check it out. All right, any other?
Yeah, just real quick, Maggie, this is great to see the thinking that's going forward.
Just real quick, Maggie, this is great to see the thinking that's going forward and the possibilities that'll be opening up for us in the future. I'd like a question about the big blue. You talked about a 6.4% reduction since the introduction of that. Can you talk just a little bit about what's the trend on that? Now, obviously what we heard just now about the program coming out, hopefully will improve that, but it's been about almost two years and where do you see that trending?
Yeah, so.
The participation in.
This shows a little bit that year one is in this blue circle and that was the big, big jump and then we added a little bit more. So it's come down again in the, I suppose, six months of data I have right now, we're still seeing decreases, but not as sharply. I think a lot of that in the data that you read nationally on waste reduction is continuous education is very, very important. So even if there's an editorial in the Citizen Times, we'll see a drop, we'll see the data because someone's bringing that conversation up again. And so we really look forward to increasing our level of education. So right now, we aren't plateauing, but we're slowly going down. And then similarly, our recycling, this red bar is going up, but this one is going up slower now in the last six months. Similarly, we've been doing a lot of research preparing for this and doing some other assessments, but haven't done as much of the education. We're really excited to track the next six months of data with this Coca-Cola and Ingles partnership that we anticipate both this chart and this chart having some impact from that. And then programming out 12-month educational stuff that gets out into the community with partners as well. Does that help answer your question?
All right. You need a motion to adopt this resolution?
Yes. I'm very pleased with this. I think this is really great because I was involved with the siting of the Panther Branch landfill. In fact, I chaired the process and that may have been one of the hardest things I've ever done in my life. We met every week for almost six months, which was just the tip of that, or just the conclusion of that iceberg. That was a process, it was about three years in siting that landfill. And I suspect very strongly that in 2035, it may be very much impossible to site another landfill in Monmouth County. And then the option at that point becomes exporting your waste to another state or another county and I find some pushback in my own mind to that. So I think this is great. The steps that are outlined are fantastic. It's difficult to start talking about pay as you throw, but I think ultimately that's what we get into because those people that are very conscious of solid waste disposal are going to understand that that's something you should be doing, but people that expect garbage as one of those free things, it really isn't. It's a very expensive part of life and if we can make it less expensive and better done, then we've accomplished a lot. And I appreciate SACE's approach to this and I'd like to move that we accept this resolution and move forward to reduce our solid waste.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here wishing to make comment on this motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a multi-year partnership with Moog Institute for Moog Fest. And I guess we're going to do item B2 as well, but with separate votes. A budget amendment and the amount of $40,000 from unassigned general fund fund balance to provide budget authorization for fiscal year 2013-14 Moog Fest support.
Good evening. Mayor, City Council, my name is John Philman. I work with the Office of Economic Development on special events. I'm accompanied tonight by our Director Sam Powers and Mike Adams, who is the President and CEO of Moog Music. And for your consideration, we're presenting a staff report that recommends the city of Asheville enter into a partnership agreement with the Moog Institute for the production of the Moog Fest Innovation and Technology Conference. As outlined within the staff report before you, Moog Institute has requested the city of Asheville provide $40,000 in financial support and a maximum value of $50,000 of in-kind support per year for three years, beginning with the April 2014 conference. Staff is in support of establishing a multi-year partnership with specific performance requirements that include the creation of jobs, the introduction of new technology companies to Asheville, and accommodations for retail sales for consumer technology products and manufacturers. Moog Music is a worldwide brand and Moog Fest is expected to generate a media value reaching 10 million through that brand. This Innovation and Technology Conference is estimated to provide a $30 million economic impact, including over 7,000 hotel rooms reserved for multiple nights with attendance between 20 and 30,000. Moog Fest is funded by over $3 million in private investment and thousands more in corporate sponsorship. Moog Fest is proposing a conference that attracts new business from outside of Asheville, which is an important element of our economic development strategy. It's a conference with an environment designed to draw technology experts and talent from around the world. And Moog Fest will build a platform from where entrepreneurs can successfully launch products and new business. Specific components of Moog Fest that are free and open to the public include a job fair, a technology expo, interactive art installations, an electronic instrument pop-up shop with multiple vendors, and a performance stage. All components are designed to promote long-term industry growth far beyond the impact of short-term entertainment. Moog Fest is also in alignment with the Asheville Five-by-Five Plan for Job Creation by targeting efforts within three of the five industry growth clusters. Those are technology, arts and culture, and promoting knowledge-based entrepreneurship. Moog Fest is also in step with the current economic development trend of selling a city on its people and their lifestyle. Big companies are now not always looking at a location as a single center, but are instead spreading their businesses among multiple locations where they don't just develop, but they sell their products. As corporations decentralize and move to a hub-and-spoke model, more emphasis gets placed on the values of a particular location. Asheville is that primary spoke that can be used for business development. The areas' cultural assets we have here, the regulatory environment, specialized and educated workforce, and an advanced and sophisticated lifestyle are all important factors for companies seeking employees. Technology companies that are expanding are not investing as much in manufacturing often as rather investing in sales, marketing, and technology support. I have just a brief bit of information that I was researching as part of this ongoing several-month-long investigation into whether we can provide this recommendation in economic development. And what I found was that through recent reports, jobs in technology are projected to be one of the fastest-growing fields through 2022. The Labor Department predicts a 40% growth and over 200,000 jobs by 2022. These are jobs that are paying well above the median salary pay ranges and frequently not tied to physical office hubs. One of the top positions that's coming about for cities to consider are promoting jobs in software development and computer programming. So due to these considerations and others, vetted through and with the support of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, staff recommends, one, that city council consider approval of a resolution that authorizes a three-year performance-based partnership agreement between the city of Asheville and Moog Institute for the Moog Fest Innovation and Technology Conference. And second, a budget amendment and the amount of $40,000 from unassigned general fund fund balance to provide budget authorization for the fiscal year 2013-2014 Moog Fest support. That budget was not included in the original 2013-2014 support as it couldn't be recommended or anticipated at the time that we received the request from the Moog Institute and the properties at Moog. With your permission, I'd like to invite Mike Adams with Moog to provide a brief overview of the conference and we'll be happy to answer any questions about our proposal.
Okay, Mayor Manheim, thank you for the opportunity to speak and to the city staff and the city council for all your support these past 18 months. Let me just speak a little bit about why I'm here. Those of you who know me know that this is not a really comfortable position for me. What we have accomplished at Moog has been done on my own with the great people that work at Moog Music. Moog Fest, except, is an entirely different endeavor. It really requires the entire community's support. Why is that? Well, if it were just a music concert, I would not be here. As a music concert, Moog Fest has stood on its own feet for the past 10 years, seven of those in New York City and three here in Asheville. What we've done is we've used the Moog brand combined with an innovative daytime conference to recreate Moog Fest as an economic development event for Asheville, Western North Carolina, and the state of North Carolina. Again, if it was just a music concert, Moog Music, the company, would reap the exact same benefits as Moog Fest, the economic development event. But over the short term, the daytime component of this is a loser. And I'm prepared to lose a significant amount of money to those standing on the outside so that those standing on the outside watching will realize that this is a really important initiative for the state and for our region and the city. So I'm going to show you two slides, just one with the short-term benefits and one with the long-term benefits. The short-term benefits, you need to understand that return on your investment is immediately, is immediate. For example, the hotels are already reporting 92% occupancy the week of Moog Fest. And this is 70 days out still. But the real value is in that first one up there. The press support, the press interest in this is through the roof. I've already received requests from Wall Street Journal, ConNasty, there's six people from Google coming, Wired, Fast Company, Gizmodo, Inc., Spin Magazine, NPR, BBC, Mashable, Engadget, Rolling Stone, and the New York Times, a key person there for their arts and leisure segment for the Sunday Times. So the investment, as you can see, and John already talked about this part of it, is significant and the payback is immediate. It's already actually happened. The real value to this, the reason I'm excited about it, is in the long-term benefits. I don't go through these in detail, but these are the bullet points I want to talk from. Attracting talent, retaining homegrown talent, increasing entrepreneurship are all the things necessary to create higher-paying jobs in this area. Traveling here for pleasure has rebuilt the city to where it is today and adding the component of traveling here for business and pleasure is a difficult combination to beat and a sustainable advantage in the marketplace. This is true for Moog Fest, the event, as much as is true for the long-term benefits it will generate. And just speak personally about this for a second. My family moved to Asheville in 1967. I'm a product of Asheville City Schools, Claxton, David Millard, and Asheville High. Graduated from NC State University with a mechanical engineering degree. Just by strange happenstance, I was able to come back here. An even stranger happenstance, able to create, work for, and fortunate enough to create a moderately successful company in this same community. In summary, I've always felt fortunate to live here and now I have the means to give back in a significant way. And so it happens that while my company has been moderately successful, its founder and namesake developed a brand that is known and revered worldwide. There are very few companies, really, if any, that could orchestrate an event that will draw the attention of the world to this small city. Moog Music has the cachet to do this. And I've decided to invest $3 million in this event that will lose several hundred thousands of dollars. I'm not a rich person. I don't have the ability to absorb this year after year, but I do have the means to absorb it for one year. Why do it? There are thousands of people watching what happens with this event. If we're successful, and we will be successful, next year will deliver even more significant long-term benefits. And from that point on, we will have created something that could benefit my hometown for years, not for years to come, but for generations to come. This drives me, this excites me. It's truly my opportunity to give back to the area. It will create jobs for my children's children and your children's childrens. Speaking of children, one element of this is an educational opportunity for our school kids. We're asking sponsoring companies, and several have already agreed to this, to invest in a scholarship whereby they will be given between 30 and 100 tickets to share with the educational institution of their choice so that more students can come to the tech expo, the conference speakers, the workshops, which are extensive, and the job fair, some 60-plus people coming here from all over the world to talk at this event. And so I want to just close with one last comment and give you a brief story. A couple of months after I started working at Moog Music, there was a woman that came up to my mother and told her that she was in the process of taking an MBA class at UNCA and had just completed in her class an analysis of Moog Music. The result of that analysis was that Moog Music would be out of business in six months. Needless to say, my mom was not too happy to hear this. But that was 12 years ago. Frankly, Moog Fest looks in a difficult position, but what we did then is the same thing we're going to do today. We have produced a superior product. The talent that's coming here is world-renowned and that's got the attention of the world's media and that's why all those people I rattled off are coming. They're excited about Asheville and they're excited about the conference that we presented. It will go well and there will be a tremendous benefit to Asheville, Western North Carolina, and the state, as recognized by the governor and the Commerce Secretary. This event will be successful and one day you all could look back and say I was a part of making this happen. And so I'd like to ask you to help me create something special for our area. And I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
All right, is there, okay. Does anyone on council have any questions?
I'd just like to comment that looking around at the world of technology and the way businesses are changing in this country and around the world, and looking toward Austin where South by Southwest has become globally famous for attracting the best and the brightest in modern manufacturing, in software, in gaming, and on and on, and that there's nothing happening in the East that compares to that and that this very reasonably could in coming years with a really bright new idea for the city that's a world away from, say, Belcher, where we were pouring in $500,000 a year for a street festival that didn't have any particular job component, that didn't have any particular education component, that didn't really have anything other than just a weekend of fun. This thing seems to me to be just a world away from that and something that would be truly Asheville and put us on the map for the future. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve both the $50,000 in-kind and the $40,000 financial input to this festival.
Second.
Well, so just on a logistical note, let's do the resolution authorizing the city manager enter into a multi-year partnership with Moog Institute for Moog Fest first.
I'll move.
Do you move?
Second.
Okay.
I had a question too. Let's see here. Well, maybe I don't have my stuff together just yet. Is John still here? As we're looking at the, those long-term effects going forward, I just wondered if you could expound a little more on, I think that there's some confusion in the community as to, you know, why is the city supporting a music festival? And less recognition of the economic development dimensions of what we're actually supporting. If this were a music festival, I wouldn't be supporting it, by the way. If that's all it was, just like Mike said, he wouldn't have been here, asking for support if it were just that. It's this broader thing. And I wonder if you can help us and the public kind of connect the dots. So someone goes to this festival, how does that translate? So, someone goes to this festival, how, how does that, how does that translate into these economic development opportunities?
And, and Mike may also be a good, a good person to answer this, but I'll tell you from my understanding how this operates, is that, one, there are networking opportunities that are created through people attending conferences that are not here for strict entertainment value, as you may have seen at other festivals, but that are here to actually learn from industry leaders. And so the speakers that they have at Moog Fest are world-renowned educators. These are people that you would pay a good deal of money to see at any event speak. I wish I could elaborate at this time about who is on the roster, but it is, there are significant people coming that will be here to see those, and the networking opportunities between them actually will generate those other types of benefits as far as job growth, job creation ideas. They also have an element with the event that is the Technology Expo, and the Technology Expo will spark the idea of more creativity, purchasing, sales, perhaps business development as a result of the products that are as a result of the Technology Expo. Some other things that occur at these types of conferences are when you expose people to an area like Asheville, especially technology professionals that are not tied to a big city environment, people that have the flexibility of living and working wherever they want, which is much different than our parents when we were growing up, who had to live closer to their places of business. These people, we want to introduce them to Asheville, to the, to the culture we have here, and to the restaurants, all of the beauty that surrounds our outdoor environment, and, and show them that Asheville is truly a place they would want to live and establish a, a home and, and a business. And so, I feel that bringing, bringing this festival to Asheville will put us in the light as we've never been before, and through that, generate quite a bit of interest.
Right, so, that, that last part was interesting. It was, it's, it's something that I think could get easily lost. In addition to connecting those entrepreneurs to networks and skill-building and, and people with capital, you're also introducing the, the whole city and region to those people who are, who are coming, who, who can set up their business anywhere.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay, Chris then.
Well, go ahead, Chris.
For Mike, question for you. I, I appreciate hearing the component of this that is, looks to be offering scholarships to students here. Can you just elaborate a little about what that looks like?
So, it's an innovation and technology conference. It doesn't necessarily fit with everybody's idea of what they would typically give from a sponsorship standpoint. So for some companies, MB Haynes is a good example of this, instead of like plastering their name NASCAR-style on a, on a window or a banner or something like that, what we're actually doing is giving them tickets in return, and those tickets, they can choose to give to AB Tech, or UNCA, or a high school, or whatever they'd like for the technology business.
And they're encouraged to give them to students that?
They are. That's, that's, that is the, that's the program. Thank you.
Okay, any other que, oh, Glenn, go ahead.
Well, I'm a supporter of Moog Fest. I'm really hopeful that the relationships that are built at Moog Fest is gonna lead to a lot of good-paying technology and entertainment jobs. I welcome all the visitors that we're gonna get to Asheville. I'm supportive of the fifty thousand dollars in in-kind services, but I can't support the additional forty thousand dollars in cash outlay to a festival that is not open to the public in all, all the activities, and it's inconsistent with our other economic development funding.
Any there? Okay.
I just want to underscore one thing in light, just to, just to clarify, that it is a ticketed event, however, there is a job fair, tech expo, pop-up shop, and performance stages that will be free and open to the public. Did I get that right, Mike?
Is there anyone here wishing to make comment on this motion? This is a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into a multi-year partnership with Moog Institute for Moog Fest. No? Okay. And I, I will just add that I've, I've tried to learn as much as I can about Moog Fest, and I think, one, one challenge for us is that, that the city made a decision to end Belcher and put out an RFP for events, and, so, and so this has been talked about a lot as a replacement for Belcher, but it's really apples and oranges. That's not what resulted. And instead, the city is taking a turn that's more of an economic development, investment approach with Moog Fest, which is appropriate, and, and it's exciting for Asheville to, to see that Moog is trying to bring together that collision of arts and technology, which is really something that is so fitting for Asheville, and, and Asheville would really benefit greatly to enhance the, the tech sector here. I think we have a lot of energy. We already have a lot of people that live here but work for employers and other places in the tech sector, and I think we need to harness a greater and growing vibrant tech sector here in Asheville and put us on, put us on the map, not just for beer and tourism. All those, those things are great. I'm not saying they're not great. They're great. But, but I, but I do think of this as a, as an economic development investment, and it's pretty exciting. And, any other questions or comments? Okay, we're ready to go.
I guess the question would be, why the in-kind of fifty thousand, and that, that's real dollars, too, but then the forty thousand in cash that, Glenn, in all due respect, certainly appreciate where she's coming from, but part of the reasoning for this is the partnership that we've done with things like the Sports Commission and the Economic Development Coalition. We make cash investments there because there is a return, and it's a huge one, and it's been proven to be, and we feel like that this is going to be as well. We feel like that this is a true partnership, and to be able to make it happen and be at the table and do the, the right things with this, this is a small amount of investment for what the ultimate return's going to be. I think, I think that it's, it's well thought and it's a good move.
Mark is not here. You know, I was turning to Mark because I knew he was gonna say something about this, and he's, he's not here. He is attending his father-in-law's memorial service, so we're missing Mark tonight, but we can all.
There's one thing that hasn't been said, is, Mike, I just really want to thank you for being out there and taking the risk and, and putting your own time and money and energy into something that will be so good for the city. Yeah, I'm just very grateful. Thank you.
All right. All right, we have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that, I gotta count, five to one. All right, do I have a motion on item B two?
Move to approve budget amendment, the amount of forty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund fund balance to provide budget authorization for fiscal year 2013-14 for Moog Fest support.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, anyone wishing to comment on this motion? Now, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next item. Thank you all.
Esther, before we move on, I didn't want to bring this up during that discussion because I think it's a separate conversation, but I did hear some concerns today about where is the city going with a future cultural arts festival? And I just wondered, Gary, sorry to throw this at you like this, but I wondered if you can kind of talk about where we are in that process and where that might go?
We were not, we briefed the Planning and Economic Development Committee about that, and at this point, there are some ideas, but there aren't viable plans for replacements. So, we're taking the, the suggestions that were submitted to us and recognizing there's gonna be some ongoing discussion, and we're open to those opportunities, as, as John indicated, that rise to job creators and reinvestment in the community. So, we're open to ideas. I, I received an email today from someone who has, has ideas as well. Some of these ideas can become festivals that the city supports in ways we, we currently support festivals and nonprofit fundraising activities and events. And, and others may evolve to be the, what you were looking for, I believe, as a council, a signature event, something that had more private money behind it and less public money behind it, but could still be that kind of major drawl which helps brand the city in a special way. So we'll continue to, to hear what different stakeholders and partners may put together and remain open and evaluate those and, and come to council on a periodic basis to let you know what we're learning, starting with the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, next item. Jeff Stoniger is gonna come up and help us with the resolution authorizing fiscal year 2013-14 housing trust fund loans to Bo Ketcher Commons LLC and Givens Estates Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present two recommendations of the Housing Community Development Committee for our housing trust funds. The first recommended loan is an additional loan of two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of supporting a loan that was authorized last year of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand to Givens Estates for the Givens Gerber Park Apartments. These would be the new construction of one-hundred-and-twenty units for low-income elders at the Gerber Village location in South Asheville. The Gerber, the Givens Estates actually took the city's commitment last year into the low-income housing tax credit competition and was missed by one, one place being able to be funded last year. They're back this year trying to assure that they are successful in that. These would be forty-two new units and seventy-eight replacement units for apartments that were built in 1979 using the HUD 202 program. They're physically obsolete and on our handicapped accessible, and if successful in this tax credit round, they would be assured an additional thirty years of affordability. So we would have one-hundred-and-twenty units that would be assured of thirty years of affordability for low-income seniors in our community. The, the total project cost is roughly fourteen-point-four million, the average cost per unit approximately one-hundred-and-twenty thousand, and the housing trust fund investment, including both last year's commitment and this year's proposal, would be four-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars per unit, which is a very low investment by the city of Asheville for that many affordable housing units that would be affordable for such a long period of time in our community. The, their, their proposed terms are in line with our housing trust fund policies, and that those proposed terms are twenty years at a two-percent interest-only, uh, interest rate. It would be adjusted as necessary in order to comply with the state regulations for their use of RPP funds, which is standard practice in terms of using these funds for affordable housing and for our housing trust fund. The other recommendation is for the approval of six new units of affordable housing in the Shiloh community on, at a, at Raleigh and Marietta Streets. This is proposed by Bo Ketcher Commons Limited, which is a corporation or limited partnership owned by Kirk Booth. And this would be three, three-bedroom units and three one-bedroom units. The three-bedroom units would be constructed as single-family apartments. The three one-bedroom units, each would be associated with one of the single-family units, would be above a garage that would also be available for lease in the community. The proposed loan is ninety thousand dollars. The average cost per unit would be a hundred-and-three thousand dollars, and the total cost of the project, six-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars. The, the housing trust fund investment would be fifteen thousand dollars. Again, these units would be affordable for thirty years, so the developers are making a commitment for thirty years of affordability. Three of the units, the three-bedroom units, affordable to households at eighty percent of median income, and the three one-bedroom units affordable to households at sixty percent of median income. You'll note in the resolution that because our policies require or allow for a special interest rate for units at available to persons of sixty percent of median income, it's broken down into two components, forty-five thousand each in terms of the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about these proposals, and again, these do come to you with the recommendation of the Housing Community Development Committee.
Question? I just, the, the, Givens didn't, didn't get the funding last year. You were pretty confident they're gonna get the funding this year? I mean, is there, is there anything more we can do to help them?
It's, it's very interesting. The low-income housing tax credit program really has become about a, a single factor, and that is the lowest tax credit allocation required per unit. The way this is structured, this is a low tax credit allocation per unit. It is lower than their proposal last year, which would have them, all things being equal, would have them score the highest or one of the absolute highest in the entire state. Now, this year, proposals from Asheville and Monmouth County return to the metro-region competition, which means they're competing against proposals in Raleigh, Mecklenburg County, you know, just a very limited number of metro areas. Every, every applicant is very aware of these competitive factors, and I know that Givens will be seeking to ensure that it, that it is competitive under those factors. It's not a sure thing, however, until the final applications are submitted, we know that they will receive the one-hundred-percent site-score site, which is predicated primarily on proximity to major grocery stores and other major services. So we know they'll, they'll score as high as can be there. We know that they'll score probably a hundred percent in the design competition, and it'll come down to just the competition this year for that lowest common denominator.
And I think it should be said that this is performance-based. If they were not to go through.
Then it wouldn't happen, right?
Yeah, I have a question that I didn't think of in HCD. Givens is operated by a church organization. Are these units available to rent to anyone from the general public?
Yes, they absolutely are. That is both the nature of the, of, of Givens' own mission, as well as the low-income housing tax credit program, and to qualify for these funds, there is no discrimination of any kind, of any kind. And especially for a faith-based organization, no discrimination or specialization based upon creed or religion.
And just wanted to add, this is, this is the most extraordinary project that we've seen come through Housing Community Development based on that per-unit cost and the locational advantages that go along with it. It's, it's exactly the kind of thing that we'd, we'd love to see every round on, as far as affordable housing trust fund funding goes. What's difficult is for folks who haven't been through this low-income housing tax credit process before is to learn, is to learn it. And so it's not unusual for folks to have to go back and, and try again, and the fact that they scored so highly last year and just came in just short, leaves us pretty confident they're gonna be able to, to pull it off this year, and they've certainly been applying themselves with a lot of dedication in making it happen. With that, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the allocations as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
And I think, too, is notable, this is for a, it's for seniors, and that's a, that's a group of people sometimes that are overlooked, and it's a large component of our community. And the services that are gonna be offered there provide transportation, to health services, and it's just a really neat thing. It's a very, very needed thing.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, because Kirk Booth is also here, he's in the back of the room, and he is someone who, year after year, has dedicated himself to also creating affordable housing in our community, leases it up before he finishes building it, and has been a really responsible person and all that, and we're really glad to see him back at the table this year.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Do we need two motions or just one? We just need one? Okay, on the resolution, or on the, yeah, on the resolution. Do I, I did have a question? Gary, you have a?
And second.
I just was concerned because you mentioned two items, but it's all in one. All right. Is there anyone here wishing to make comment on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Last on my agenda is boards and commissions, and Councilman Hunt is not here, and Councilman Davis will take over at this point.
Well, we certainly missed Councilman Hunt.
Well, we certainly missed Councilman Hunt tonight, and honored to be taking over for him at this point. The, we're looking to, who to interview for these board openings, and pretty neat, the African-American Heritage Commission, which we just have formed or just authorized recently, now needs to be populated with members. And we've got, I think, 21 applicants, which is huge.
Woo!
And very good applicants. I am very impressed with that. The difficult part is we're, as a, we as a city are allowed three of those seats, and then the county will be allowed three, and then the committee at large will, will finish it off, so with another three. Our opportunities are great here, and I like to think that, that these same folks, whether we put them on there, that same list is going to be viable for the other, other organizations as they go forward too. So it's quite possible we may not seat someone tonight that will be seated later. So this is kind of complicated because there are so many of them, but I think what we could do, we can go around the table, and you can offer three names. So I'll give you just a moment to think about those if you have not had an opportunity to do so, and you can pass while we get to somebody else. But I think that we came up with three apiece, and the committee decided this afternoon, and it's Chris's decision, and it's a good idea, that we limit our choices to six applicants to interview. So, so that way, there'll be other opportunities for these folks. We put six at the table to talk to, and we go around this table to get three of your choice, we might find commonality there, and don't want to limit anyone, but I think the committee would suggest six being a good number.
May I ask some, for the, for the, the African-American Heritage Commission, I saw that, are we only looking for folks that live in the city?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
Yeah, we knew that one would come up. The committee feels like that, that because there are county appointments, and they can appoint within and outside the city, and our, our policy is to point inside, to point inside the city, we would like to stay with that.
Okay.
Just note that that's the first time that's come up since you've been on council, and it will keep coming up. So to remember what we decided tonight.
Right. Basically, what we tried to do.
Point inside the city. And there's actually a couple on here that are not labeled correctly. Sasha Mitchell and Desmond McAfee are listed as city residents, but they're actually county residents, right? The other ones are labeled correctly.
And Maggie knows my heart, so if we pick one, she's going to tell us.
She wrote me my, she wrote me my cheat sheet.
So, you know, it's, and again, if you don't, if you're not prepared, as we, we'll start, Glenn on your end, and kind of work our way around, and--
Kind of list.
And Maggie will keep track of that, so if you'll give the three names you wish or what you're comfortable with at this point, and then we'll come back if you can't do that.
Okay, and I'm only going to talk, just the first one.
Okay.
You can list three.
No, you can list all three.
No, but I mean, only for the African-American Heritage.
Right, that's correct. And, and you don't, you don't have to put out three, but you're up, you're able to do three.
Okay. Jan Goffney, James Lee, and Lamar Hilton.
Did you get those?
Maggie is, she's described.
You ready, Maggie? Okay. Jan Goffney, Phyllis Utley, and Dr. Lamar Hilton.
Cecil?
Warren Smith, Johnny Grant, and Dwayne Barton.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, can you take a second? Warren Smith, Dwayne Barton--
Johnny Grant.
How many, how many different ones, different folks do you have now?
I'm sorry.
We're trying to limit it to six.
Yeah, we're going to take--
Oh, you're going to do the tally? Okay. All right, so Marvin Chambers, Johnny Grant, and Al Whitesides.
Hey, I'm sorry, what's your first one?
Johnny, or Marvin Chambers.
Okay.
Marvin Chambers, Johnny Grant, and Lamar Hilton.
And mine are--
Oh, Speedy Gonzales.
Mine are Dwayne Barton, Marvin Chambers, and Al Whiteside.
So this is an embarrassment of riches in this application process. I wish we, well, and it's my hope that the commission, as it designs its charter, can find a way to include all this talent that applied.
Well, and the county will have three appointments, and then the commission itself will appoint three, so--
Which will be helpful.
This is great. Maggie--
What is the, did you--
It's going to work out good for six. Council will interview Jan Goffney, Marvin Chambers, Johnny Grant, Dwayne Barton, Lamar Hilton, and Al Whitesides.
That's--
It's amazing.
Powerful group of folks, and there's a powerful group of folks yet on the list, so I feel real good about that. Moving along, then, we will be, we'll be interviewing those, Maggie will come up with a time.
On the 25th, and I'll give a time.
All right. And then the Board of Electrical Examiners, this is a board that's pretty important, and I want to take a moment of personal time here. Harold Garland has been on that board for as long as it's been in existence, I guess. And those of you who know Mr., or knew Mr. Garland, he is a quality individual, and he, he did the wiring, or the, a lot of the wiring, a lot of the engineering of the wiring at the U.S. Cellular Center years ago. Has been on this commission for many years, and we lost him. Mr. Garland was quite advanced age, he lived a great long life, and we lost him, I think, about two months, two or three months, two months ago. He was just a quality individual, and those people who know him were lucky to know him. He's a good guy. And so we've got an opening on that board. We've had one applicant, and this is a board of professionals. These people know electricity and wiring, and they have to be pros at what they do. And we've had one applicant, it's Ken Frisby, who's quite qualified. The committee felt that we would be well to just go ahead and appoint Mr. Frisby.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving along. Community Relations Council has, there's been a request to postpone for two months, we're passing by that for now. And then the Historic Resources Commission, had some great applicants there. Kendra Turner has applied, and we all know her well. The committee would like to recommend Kendra, and do that, we feel like we'd go without the interview process with her. She's been an employee here before, I think we all know her well. But I would open the floor to a nomination of her appointment, or open it to other people that are on the list. So, I could entertain a motion for another nomination.
I move for Kendra Turner.
A motion for Kendra.
I would second.
Any other people we want to interview?
I wanted to interview William Ekins, I think is how you pronounce his name.
Okay, if you have a desire to interview, then to make it fair, rather than to just do an acclamation here, let's, if we could withdraw the motion in a second, then we would interview both.
So moved.
Then we'll interview both of those. Great, great applicants.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
If I can get everyone in for February 25th, council will begin your interviews at 3:42, and I'll confirm after everyone's getting on.
All right, that concludes our regular agenda. I don't have anyone on the sign-up sheet. Do I? Maggie, did you get any sign-up sheets? Okay. If there's anyone here who would like an opportunity to speak, though, we, this is the time to do that. All right, seeing none, we will conclude. Does anyone have any announcements or anything they would like to say at this point? I think we have a closed session here. We have one item on the closed session, correct? Yes. Okay, go ahead.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including a lawsuit involving the following parties: Mary Ann Wilcox, Stoney Gantz, Brian Hogan, Sherri Enfeld. The statutory authorization is NC General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will adjourn from the closed session.